...on the 12 and the charge on 60, but home cost is 32, that would be another 28,000. So we believe that making the 200,000 offset to our budget is very realistic.
Would the High Roads take care of the students who are going to New Britain?
Those are two of the people as possible. And again, it's, the longer the distance, the more money you're saving on transportation.
23 hours a day is a plus.
Very expensive. It's almost 50,000 a year for two children, just for transportation.
But those two come back with a big cut, sure, right?
Well, we can't say.
We can't say for sure.
In a public, you can't stop telling people who's coming because that's the right of the parent and the right of the PPT process. The point is, we do know we have children as far as Rhode Island, New Britain, Providence, we have children all over. To bring eight to 10 of them back and not have that transportation is literally, you know, savings for transportation, anywhere from 50 to 80,000 if we do it right. What happens is this, let's say there are two children, whatever the program is, and they're going, and one of them perfectly will match in, you know, into the service that we're going to provide, it's a behavior program, right? And one doesn't, you still have the full cost of transportation. So we have, that's a lot of work on our part to do this, but you really do look at if a school such as Harmony Hill has six of our children, typically the six children are similarly involved in their needs, and probably all six could come back. And that's why we know that the program we're building by Mr. Spaulding's efforts is to look at the best matched need we have. We can either match it to autism or we can match it to the behavior. And right now, our highest cost is coming from those children that have what we call an emotional disturbance or behavior service, that really needs that higher end high school support. And they're a little more independent because they're a little older. The programs we saw were only eight to 12, so we were looking at that level of age level. Anyways, we do know, and by the way, for the question on the contract, Mr. Spaulding and then they brought me in later, we met today, the 384 is confirmed, the 12 students confirmed, the excess cost of concern. All we're doing is working out the particulars, we want a one-year annual contract rather than committing three years. Those are the fine points of making sure the contract allows for protection of the district, but also allows us to expand and meet the needs of the district. So the contract numbers are clear, the numbers of students and the services they're bringing in are all established. That's clear. The contract language is the shipment in Goodman Review that says we can live with this number.
We'll have a copy, we'll have that contract due by the end of the month, and then we'll be sending it to our town.
I don't think that we should project any savings for having a program at this point in time without a signed contract. I know I'm being very pessimistic, but stuff happens and we go out to the chopping block how many times this fiscal year? And I just don't want, you know, have a say, okay, we're going to save 100,000 bringing in this new program, and oh, something happens, it doesn't happen, and then we've got $100,000 that we're on the wood for, we said we're going to cut. Am I making myself clear?
You are. I would say, and I'm not trying to, I just want to give you a little bit. So whatever you choose to do, you can leave the budget as is, you can incorporate. It's a bottom line to, first to the selectmen's office and then to the Board of Finance. And if the 100,000 weren't realized in terms of that program, you know you have a contingency plan that lists items that we don't typically want to cut, but certainly there's more than 100,000. So if the High Roads were for some reason going to be something that will only generate half the amount or whatever, you have a protection of a contingency plan. So the question tonight is, what is your starting point to go to the selectmen's office and say, this is the money that we believe is an appropriate request for the appropriation? And then from there, they will look at that and look at revenues and then come to us and either ask for other kinds of cuts depending on the state's revenue. And from there, you have to then add and change the rules. It's always a bottom line game, but you have to have a reason for every line when you make a cut. Like you said, you don't want to make a promise and let it materialize because then you're going to take it out of another pocket.
And I have to say that I took, I went out on the trip to High Roads, and we also asked, we were able to speak with Linda, with the superintendent of Linda, and kind of look at this program since, how are they working out for your district, give us, you know, be brutally honest. And I have to say, I'm very confident that this is a very high-quality program in what I've seen. They've been very professional. I also know that, you know, with the contract coming, they also said they would come to the board to present, so we can make sure to reach out to them for April, for our April meeting and have them here. But I have to tell you, I am very confident that we will save that additional 100,000 at least.
We have a budget for the board, Friday, now.
Yeah, I have a question, because we have some people put, God bless the Board of Finance, have we heard anything from the selectmen, the selectwoman, or the Board of Finance relative to this number?
We have not, but I was going to, in my individual reports, note that I've been in contact with chairmen, secret with the Board of Finance, and we have come up with a date. I know I told you on a couple different dates, however, because there's so many people that are coming to that meeting between the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Education, the Board of Finance has graciously offered that they will forego their agenda for that evening and they'll make their Board of Finance meeting on the 21st the joint meeting because it's already scheduled on the calendar. So we would be sitting with the Board of Finance and the Town Selectmen on Wednesday, March 21st at 6:30 PM at Town Hall. That's where, there really hasn't been any communication, I've received no communication from the selectmen's office at all regarding, you know, the budget year this year.
6:30?
6:30. 6:30. But I have been in contact with Mr. Secret, so just basically giving them the update of where we are and what we have, you know, looked at for the contingency plan.
So in terms of whether or not the Board of Finance is happy with our budget, we're not, because we need to present it.
Yeah, we would have to get a tip.
They need a document to react to. If they're not happy, not happy. Everyone has clearly said from the town, you need to have a contingency plan and you need to be thinking, if the governor cuts us $1 million, where can it come from? It can't just come from the taxpayers or from the fund balance. It has to somehow be mitigated. And so that's why you dealt with all sorts of things that could try to do that, things you don't want to do, but certainly in good faith, you took the.
We're not putting any of those to the board.
But they're not ready yet.
Yeah, we'll present up to the number she just gave, 35.
We would be bringing forth.
With the contingency, yeah, we do have these additional costs that we're not going to disclose right now, but we can, if need be.
So right now, we would be bringing forth 35, 071, 582, which would be the 100, extra $100,000 from High Roads and an activity fee of $50,000.
Okay, and that's the increase of .47.
That's .47.
What does that work out to for family roughly?
It's about $150 per family per year that they do, and that would be if we're on free reduce, you have.
Yeah, it's a slide.
Just so that people don't feel like.
Yeah.
About $10,000 a month.
Just like the watches.
About $10,000 a month for school fees.
That's a move of $5,000.
Governor was kind, we don't get cut. Everybody can win on that one.
Okay, so Chrissy, do you need a motion sometime towards this?
Well, unless there's any further discussion.
Okay, but ultimately you would need a motion for.
I do feel that it would be paramount for the board to consider the additional cuts presented at the special meeting two weeks ago as well. I know it's not a subject anybody is very eager to jump into, but we have had the discussion. And I believe there has been sufficient communication between other boards in the town to communicate the need to bring this budget to as flat of a number as we can. I realize there are several restrictions on that road as far as monies that would need to be opened up in a contractual negotiation, which would pretty much remove us from this current budget cycle. And there are probably some very unpopular decisions to be made, but I do strongly believe that we need to bring a figure to the Board of Finance and the town as close to a flat budget as we can. Personally, I do believe that we will bring, any proposal brought very far above anything half a percent will likely be brought back to us. And I think the fact that we all acknowledge that reality means we should be tackling that issue now rather than deferring it for another week.
.47 is pretty low. What should we say, we go lower tonight?
We have an option on the table that is lower than the .47. And that would be the budget year figure 34, 34,993,582.
Oh, yeah, yeah, the number that's way down there, yes, we can talk about those suggestions. And that, but that's still not zero.
It is not zero, but I will, I will trust the superintendent and the business manager and the information they have presented, as difficult and unpopular as it may be, that that is likely the course we will be treading closest to over the upcoming year. And I believe that that of the three options should probably be what we prepare to present to the Board of Finance.
Personally, as a parent with a child in the schools and being in the schools, I can't, I just, I can't. We're at a point where we're not progressing if we go too deeply. I want to still see progress. I want to see our schools with innovation, especially for what's in this budget already. There's, there's just, there's no luxury, there's, there's no fat to trim off of this budget anymore. It is there, but I believe a .47 increase of giving them the 35,071, 582 is there for, for not knowing anything else about the budget season this year officially on the record of giving that number. And that's, that's my, my personal opinion, you can have further discussions, but.
No, I agree with you. I don't think we should give them all the cuts right now because we need to know what we're dealing with before we cut anymore from our budget. We are going to, like Krista said, go backwards. And it's not fair to our children in this town to go backwards. We need to push them forward. And I know that we're going to need to really, indeed, find out where we can cut from where we can keep at an even keel.
Everything goes up with inflation. I mean, what can you do about inflation?
A .47 increase, I think, is less than the cost of inflation.
That's less than inflation.
Consider 2% to 3% and lots of inflation.
In negotiations, you never, like Cardo, you never give your bottom number.
No, you don't.
You know, I mean, we need to have some fluff, so I think if we go forward with .47.
With what we have now.
And then, you know, and then, because if we give them the, if we give them the even lower number and they still want to make more cuts, then we're.
Then we're really already.
They're really involved.
Already cost ourselves a lot.
I don't kind of get where you're getting at.
We may have to cut more, but.
We may have to, but right now, let's go forward.
Until they tell us.
Until we meet and discuss and they say, look, you have to cut more. If that's the case, then that may be the case, but right now, we're not.
I mean, they might, they might want a flat 0% and, you know, town may want to do that too, but I think at this point, I'm not, you know, I agree with Matt, that we do have to have, you know, more cuts probably, but at this point, we give them the number that we honestly feel is our best.
We do have a contingency plan. The plan is in place.
We also don't know, we also don't know at this point because there, there hasn't been communication of what the town revenues are or from, you know, that they're pulling in, there was a reassessment. I think there's so many different options.
And there's still, there's still stuff in Hartford too, aren't there? It's where more money might still come to us, so we want to cut everything and then when X money comes in, I'll go to the town.
If we learned anything, plenty of money.
I'm saying that, but with what we know now, this is the best number, I think.
Yeah, I think that we should go forward.
We can't be in this position next year.
I don't like an extra meeting either.
At the last.
I'm going to put a meeting, well.
At the last meeting that we had, we decided that we would go forward with 35, 221, 582.
We didn't vote on it.
What trip.
We didn't vote on it.
It was suggested we should go forward with that one, yeah.
Now, we've already reduced 150,000 from that, and I think we should.
And the activity fee was part of the reduced cuts that Matt's talking about. The activity fee was one of the things that's talked about on the list.
Yes, it was.
So we're already dipping into that hole.
We've already brought it down an additional 150,000.
The two of them were on the, the additional 100,000 for the High Roads and the activity fee were on the additional cuts.
They have, they have.
So we've already gone into that a little bit.
So I think that we should draw the line here. For now.
It's not drawing the line, but opening negotiations.
Yeah, opening up, because we don't know what we're going to end up in.
I don't like the idea of this being adversarial with us against the selectmen and the Board of Finance. It's a town, we're all.
It's all the same money.
We're all together.
Yeah, it's all the same money, you're right.
But I think, you know, bringing forward, in my opinion, this number, it shows them that we really, we brought the number down, just on our own, bringing it down to the 35, 221, 582. And then we said, all right, let's bring it down even more, and we just brought it down another 150,000. I think it shows that we're taking the budget seriously already for 2019 after we really took a beating for 2018, so.
Are you looking for?
Do you want to vote on this?
Well, we need a motion.
We would need a motion with a number to adopt the fiscal year 19 budget in the amount of.
Can I move we adopt the fiscal year budget in the amount of 35,71,582?
I don't second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we will be sending forward a budget to the Board of Finance and Town Selectmen in the amount of 35,71,582. But with that, again, I just would remind at this point that we do have a meeting scheduled, joint meeting between the Board of Education, Board of Finance, and Town Selectmen on March 21st at 6:30 PM in the Town Hall auditorium.
Oh, that's the, that's the one, yeah.
And that, that is, that is the biggie, so if we can have, you know, a full board, I think it will show.
At 6:30?
Yes, at 6:30.
3:21?
Yeah. All right, with.
I'm sorry.
The Mr. Secret, it's all up. Let's not even talk about it.
I'm sorry.
No, it is, it is a real projection right now.
Because the weather has predicted it right on the line.
Well, let's hope that doesn't happen, but.
I know it was wrong too.
All right, so High Roads contracts, we're not looking for really a motion at this point, but we will have a contract during the next board meeting to make sure it's sent out to all the members.
Or sign contract?
No, no.
You will vote on it. Oh, oh, wait, you're voting, you're talking about us.
Also, if you'll, if you'll reach out to High Roads, I think it would be of benefit just to have them come and do the presentation to the board as well.
But they were here today and they are going to come.
Great.
Okay, great.
So with that, moving on to new business, 2018, 2019 calendar adoption, Mr. Petrow.
All right, you'll notice the bowl that we did on Mammon, I think we should solve this calendar before the next, so.
Go until July 4th.
If you, if you look, you receive the folder in front of you and you will see the page, hold on, the page that I gave you, should have been the first one in there. On the back of it, it will be the calendar that has a lot of black on it.
Oh, yeah. Those are the days we lost.
These are all the days that were lost, were up to eight days that we lost due to weather. So if you already received this last month and made an approval and it said that we would end school for students on June 22nd, that's the, that's the bar, and you already voted that last month.
Right.
And since then, you've said to me, and I'm obviously not a weatherman, suppose we have more days? And I said, well, one day we could accommodate, the two were a little tricky, and if there's one more next week, I'm going to stay.
Since last week, we had two.
Two, since the last month, yeah, two.
Yeah, we had last month's.
Right, March 7th and March 13th.
Yeah, they did, some of them did snow, but you can't, you can't.
No, we can't be, because the weathermen have predicted it, let's start, we have to err on the.
Exactly, exactly, so.
You don't want children out.
It's, it's, we don't have a lot of options, let me just show you what it is. If you look at that same calendar, you'll see that it says under the March, it says 8, 9, and then it says note, March 7th and 13th are now snow days, so you see the black boxes in there on. We now need to make up those days. There really are for me to offer a recommendation, I actually have to add, they're taking the 20th and saying students must come in and the 19th. So that is an option that I would pose that you can consider, let me tell you the pitfalls of that one. The pitfalls are the children, many of the children, or some children, and definitely some of the faculty have made plans and they've financed travel or whatever, this is the April break, they don't get a February break. If you said that we're going to change the date, you can do that, you have the right to do that, but that means you will exclude some students who already made plans to travel and certainly staff who may not be able to.
They pay subs, huh?
Or if you have the subs, if you have 10, 12, 15 people who've already made plans and they've committed $1,000 to travel and you say you have to come back. The reason that the districts that I contacted said they're using the end of the week is if people made plans, they were going to start on the 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th. You can't take Monday and Tuesday, it sounds like why not have them come in Monday because their plans would be they, they can't leave on 14th and 15th and they lose the 16th, 17th.
Yeah, you give them that time to leave right on.
So they'd have to leave one day planned and they'd have to come back on Thursday for those who could. The majority of people who are leaving the state, who are doing travel, are not people in the lowest income. So you have a subset of people who you're going to exclude by virtue of the right that they have travel plans that might be out of state. So there are, it's fraught with issues of trying to tell the faculty and staff that they have to come in, the fact that, that you may have absenteeism on the part of either staff or children, so it complicates. If you add it to the end of the year, which means that right now, instead of the students ending on the 22nd, they would be coming in the 25th and 26th.
It's late.
It is, but if you add it there, here's the benefits of doing that. Number one, the last day, the 26th, would be only a half day because we typically try to allow the students to get out, have to come in, get their information, make sure that they've had a chance to end their year, and then the teachers use the remaining part of that day just to virtually end up making sure that our schools are secure. If you do that, we could actually still hold graduation on the Friday, the 22nd, it was going to be the 21st, but having it on a Friday is good for people whose extended families come in for the weekend to celebrate. And if you have graduation on the 22nd, then they have the weekend Saturday and Sunday. If you push graduation to Monday, you're virtually going to have the weekend pass and then they're going to have a celebration.
Right now graduation's on the 21st?
What's that?
Right now graduation's.
Right now graduation's on the 21st, it's written down, it says PHS graduation is 6/21, that's what you planned on before, but by moving the calendar two days, you still can have graduation. These are seniors, they still can come to school the next day.
Do you want that to say that it's a eighth grade promotion?
No, that means the eighth grade promotion moves to Monday.
Oh, okay.
So that virtually, you have to move them forward.
Yeah, okay.
And then our schools would be open on the 20, the 26th, but it would be a half a day, and so virtually you're closing. For the staff, they move two days forward for professional development. So you virtually have to make a decision and you have to think what two days would more negatively impact, losing the April vacation in the middle of the week with both staff and parents who may not have planned to be in school or adding to the end when we're still in the last week, the staff are already here, the 25th and 26th, we're telling the students they would be coming in.
The staff's already, the staff's already, is that 25th, 26th already?
The staff are there, it says PD, they're already scheduled to come in. So we would be extending the year. You would basically tell the parents that we're only extending graduation by a day, so they would be here Friday, whether it was Thursday or Friday, I think that's available to most parents. And I think the graduate, the promotional exercise being on the Monday, the last day of full day of school, is still in keeping with practice that we have. And the last day typically at the high school is a day where the kids who have, there's a few kids, there's a number of kids who just need that last day to make up any work, they missed an exam, there's no day left, so we always leave the last day because we give exams the last four days. And that gives them that one day, so there's usually a lower enrollment, that's not a big crisis for a high school. It just has more merit in terms of educational merit to move forward and not disrupt the learning year, the planned cycle of parents, families, and staff.
All right. What if we have another day?
God bless us, everyone.
You know, this.
I think that at this point, when graduation potentially being on the 22nd, eighth grade promotion being on the 25th, and the 26th being a half day, that's as far as I think we can go. I think additional snow days, we have to look at April vacation.
I think for now, we just go with additional in June, and then, you know, now our next meeting, if we have more, we'll start with April. Now, I can leave April a little up, I agree.
You can't, you know, your vote has to give me either, if you do that, you have to give me the authority, because I can't come to you on August 14th, April 14th and say they're coming in on April 20th. You need to give me the authority to put the last day of the vacation.
Make graduation a 4th of July weekend.
We're not on the 4th of July, first. They tied our hands.
So at this point, then we have to consider the February, I mean, people.
They put forward a motion to.
You would have to.
We'd authorize, we'd be looking for a motion to authorize the superintendent to make amendments to the 2017, 2018 school calendar based on any potential snow days.
In April.
In April and the end of June.
Well, we're approving that in June, all right, don't we know we have to do that?
So we just give him the permission to do it in April.
Yeah, beyond the date, beyond the calendar you adopt, you just have to give the authority to.
To go past the 22nd.
Okay, so, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to allow the superintendent to amend the calendar at this discussion.
You're actually adopting a new calendar.
Yeah, to adopt a new calendar.
Yeah, that's true.
Based on his, based on his.
Based on his judgment.
Based on his judgment.
All right.
All right, well, that's what we're doing. Before we go forward, in the past, it's probably been 10, 12 years since we've done this, but there was a provision that said if there were X number of snow days by a certain date, then days would come off April vacation. So this way, the problem is where, I mean, there was, I don't know if they still have it, though, do we? So have that provision in mind?
There's a provision, you can do that. And I think that even tonight, I think Mr. Betch may, may offer this, when you look at next year's calendar, I think we need to do this upfront with parents, and we need to put a, like, if you want to have an extended calendar saying these are contingency days or April, I think letting everybody know upfront, when you, to tell them the week before, I think, I think we're compromised. But I agree with you, I think we need to adopt a calendar that lets people know, here's how we will resolve.
Now, he's doing that, I mean, I was saying that if there's extra snow days after today, it's going to be a lot of the April vacation.
That's right. We did, that's what you just.
That's what you're getting at today.
But next year, we want them to know.
Well, that's next.
It can't be right up front.
But let's do one at a time, a whole on this first, okay?
And leave the vacation.
All right, so at this point, we have a motion to make the last, the high school graduation, the 22nd.
Yes.
And we have eighth grade promotion, so 25th, with half day on the 26th.
Yep.
And so that has been made and seconded, correct?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries.
What does this do to teacher or PD?
It just moves that PD two days forward.
From the 27th to 28th.
Correct. Contractually, that's what it is.
All right, and then we had a second motion that needs to be made that authorizes the superintendent to make changes to the 2017, 2018 school calendar at this discussion if there's further snow days.
In advance of your meeting.
In advance.
Another, you can't give me a cop one.
You're only due to be up until April, then you have the right to make your own change.
And I will be doing rain games between now and next year. I don't care about the weather, as long as it's windy.
Alright.
Matt, Matt, Matt made motion.
Made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Alright. Now. Alright. Moving.
Now you have one more calendar.
Moving on to the 2018, 2019 calendar adoption.
Alright.
So, on that one, you don't see any dark black boxes, cause there's no snow days yet. So. Now, you have the calendar in front of you, and I know we put some out for the public who are looking at it. But let me just show you, at the bottom, I wrote a comment and I wrote it off on the other side for a little more detail. So you have a calendar that's following this year. There are some unique things that I think are very beneficial to the students and everyone. So it begins with, at the beginning of the year, we would have two professional days and then a half day. We've not done that. We got to the 182-day calendar, cause there has been a request, as in the past, five years, seven years ago, we used to bring just freshmen at the high school. We're also noting that it would be good if we had a half day because now that we have an all-day kindergarten, we don't have to worry about midday travel. PK always starts the next day. So the important thing is to let the kids come in, get acclimated to their schools, elementary, middle and high school, have them go home, and then the teachers now will have an opportunity with the parents to look at who are the children who might need to look at the IEP. Let's talk and collaborate how we're gonna organize the class. Let's make sure that we can use that half day for actually planning for instruction for the year. That half day now fits in the 182 without really a big detriment to students. That's good. That's, that's in the, uh, August 29th, that half day, which we never started the year with a half day. I think it's gonna work out well for our students and our family, now that we have 182. The only other thing is then it follows our calendar as is now. One good thing is Good Friday is in the middle of the April break. So you look at April, you see an oval and then a circle. So we're not taking, that's one less day.
Yeah, that saves us.
That's one day, so that's why we're on the 13th at the end.
Okay.
But a request came forward, a couple of people had asked about, if you look how many weeks in the calendar have a three or a four or a five-day weekend? You know, right at the beginning, we have a two-day in August, then we have a September 3rd, three-day weekend, then we have an October 8th, 9th. And the problem for some children, especially those a little more sensitive to lack of continuity, is they have four days off and then they have three days on the weekend and a two-day. And so the question was, can we start to look at how we can reduce that? Well, the October 8th is a holiday, we can't do anything, and then the 9th is actually a regional day. The day that becomes the more flexible day is in March. We look at the fact that the region is expecting to be out on the 8th. We get that from East Con. Brooklyn is out, Ellis is out, Killenly is out. So our transportation can be out on that day and we don't pay for that day. If we are open and they are closed, we run our buses, but then have to run another day for Ellis and another one. So it's a cost savings to match up March 8th. However, that day was scheduled as professional development. And a question that came through, so I'm posing it now so the board can hear it in public, is can the March 8th professional day become the parent visitation? And move the professional day to February 19th? Now look back at the 19th, the 19th is just a vacation day. The kids are out, right? They're already out on the 19th. If you have that as a professional day, the children will still be out. There's no change for a child.
So the March 8th goes, so the kids stay the same, the teachers just have to.
They just have a professional day on the 19th.
And how do they get rid of this March 7th?
Because then they don't need the 7th.
The 7th is a school day.
The 7th is a school day and the 8th becomes the parent visitation. Well, I, I'm gonna tell you, I did not come up with this. I didn't, I sent it out to administrators, I sent it out to our, uh, uh, union leaders cause we tried to get consensus. But it's good that the more I look at it, say, is there a way that we can reduce the limitations on continuity for instruction? So the simplicity is that was the recommendation, I thought it should come to the board, from the board to the board, that says, can we do this? You know, you can't call each other up and say, what do you think of it? Cause then you're, you're voting in private, so they can only call me and then I have to bring it to public for you to think about.
I just know that looking at like this year, for example, which we run pretty parallel to this calendar, is what calendar we have this year, with all of the snow days and everything. I, I just don't think we've had a full week of school since.
Since the January 1st?
No, before that, I mean, yeah, December.
It was February 12th, February 12th was the last full week.
And I mean, as a parent, when my children are doing, but we, we're home four days. We're home more than half a week. Why, why do I have to go to school for those three days?
Bad continuity.
Yeah. And it's, it's tough, it's tough, especially when you're getting work sent home because the teachers want you to know what they had planned, that they can't do it because the kids aren't in school. I just, I.
Alright. And then, so that's one consideration. What you would be doing is adopting a calendar with March 8th being a parent visitation and moving, uh, and making the 7th the full day, I will make that adjustment for you. And then February 19th would become a PD day.
I like that idea.
Okay, and then.
Do you want to honor it or?
Oh, you, you will, but I just wanna make the calendar whole. And then that now moves the 13th very nicely to the 12th. So it's one less day in the calendar year, since we've had eight snow days, you're, you're shortening.
I think the 13th over that is a good idea.
No, no, well, let me explain what, I'm gonna, I'm agreeing with you, but I wanna tell you. You now have to tell the parents what the last 182-day is, so there would be a bar on the 12th. But Mr. Betcha said, I think we should indicate, which some districts do, that the days that are snow contingencies, like tell people the 13th, 14th, 17th, 18th are contingencies, snow days. If you let them know that, then parents won't plan to and staff won't plan to take the 17th and 18th as a hot note.
Tell them ahead of time that for each snow day, it comes the 13th and the 14th.
Right, and so you give them up. If you don't need them and you have no snow days, the contingency days of 13th, 14th, 17th, 18th would go away. But telling the faculty and the parents upfront, these are snow day contingencies, I think is a good practice. And there are some districts that do that, and then they just give them up when they know that we don't have those four snow days.
Most likely will be using them.
Well.
We'll use some of them.
Some of them.
No, definitely.
I mean, yeah, we have, at least three snow days a year.
You can see, we would have never told parents, don't, don't plan a vacation July, June 24th. Who thought we were gonna be here at the end of the month? But who expected eight snow days, two of them being wind days in October, and then a rain day that was supposed to be a snow day? And then, you know, that hit the west coast, the west side of Connecticut. And this, this time, the west got two inches and we got 23 inches. It's been a unique weather pattern. So I think that what you would have then is an agreed plan, puts PD on the 19th, parents on the 8th, a shortened year to the 12th, and then four days for contingency. I think it's more responsive to the families.
Right, so with the contingency made, the period goes to the 12th, and then we add up four days of contingency.
Yes, yes.
And then we're gonna leave this contingency dates at the end of June.
Which you'll take to the 19th, so with four contingency days, we have possible till the 19th.
18th. 13th, 14th, 17th, 18th.
Oh, good.
You gotta subtract the date, cause now we're using the vacation for PD, 18th is the last.
Okay, yeah.
And those are contingency days, they don't affect children until you need them. But at least now they know to plan for them.
Yep, I have a question with regard to the half day. Okay, I didn't realize it was a half day professional day on a Thursday in May.
In May, yes.
Was Thursday not Friday?
Well, again, it's, it's a day where kids are coming in. And if you look at how many Fridays are affected, one of the things we've heard is parents get confused when they see a Monday or a Friday, if it's a professional day. It looks like we're favoring a three-day weekend for kids or even for staff. Now, the staff are not getting the day off, they're working, right? The reason we try to do it is, you'll notice that we have a, a triangle on a Wednesday, the August 29th, a Tuesday, the 18th, a Wednesday, uh, November 27th, and then we have a Thursday in January, a Thursday. We try to keep the professional days in the middle of the week so that we have the kids before that half day and after, not on the end. Cause what happens is when it's a Friday half day, the kids say, I don't wanna go in. It's only a half day, I'm not doing anything. That's not true, but that is their reality. As far as they know, why am I going in for half a day? So when it's in the middle of the week, students aren't trying to get out early for a nice weekend. We've avoided half days on the weekend.
I think in addition too, from my experience, is if you have students that go for related services on a set amount of a set day, and you have a student whose day is Friday, and those half days are always Fridays, they're going to get caught in related services because that's always the day that they're, they're missing. So you might have some students that get like art and music a bunch of days, and then that class that's Friday for a half day, they miss four or five art and music classes.
Well, Mondays could be said the same thing, there are holidays.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
Alright, so do we have a motion to adopt the 2018, 2019 school calendar?
As we discussed tonight.
As we discussed.
I move that, we accept it as discussed tonight.
I say it.
Motion sent in and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Alright. Alright, finally, superintendent's report.
This is, this is quick, she's gonna put up, you can look and see some of the classroom doors as she does that. But let me, uh, in less than five minutes. First of all, I just wanted to let you know what happened with the, as the students said. The, the presentation today in support of Parkland represented students getting together. They actually gave out rubber bands, which is another way, can you just turn off the sound? Good. Well organized, when, when the school planned this over the last two and a half weeks, the students helped to design it themselves. Mr. Worth virtually set up and said, I just wanna prepare the, you to understand, students are running this. They ran it, it was in the gymnasium, so there'd be enough space equivalent to outside. We had a two-hour delay, so instead of starting at 7:15, we started at 9:15. Forty-five minutes later, 300 children need to assemble in the gymnasium. That took leadership, planning, three police officers, if not more, were present. If they, if this were outside, you needed to have them in the peripheral areas so that no cars were coming. We had to be considerate of the fact that normally at 10 o'clock, there's no transportation. There's nobody going to school, everybody's in by 9. But now it's a two-hour delay, Shepherd Hill would be coming in between 10 and 11. So if you had kids outside, the buses are coming up Shepherd Hill, they're going right in the back of, of the high school. So we had to worry about all those. Mr. Worth had all of the contingencies planned for, students assembled, they organized themselves, as we worked with two students, it was respectful. There was nothing about what our personal opinion is or what our political opinion. All they said is, we're here to represent and honor and respect the 17 lives that were lost. Try and stand for one minute silently standing up, do that for 17 minutes, that's a lot. You know, in terms of blood pressure, but these kids were amazingly silent. It was an impressive, respectful thing. And I think this is something that, you know, not we encourage, the thing is that you have to realize this happened across the nation. Watch what happened, you will see hundreds of thousands of students who felt it's their time. Now additionally, Mr. Worth has planned that there will be like a table set up, so if students wanna answer a survey, again, all of this was voluntary. 300 students stayed back, 360 students decided to come, nobody's being pressured. Even the survey is a survey about what would you, what might you recommend towards safety? How well do you feel about safety, what else might you do? The issue is about our children, their safety in our school. This is not about whether you believe in this way or that way, this isn't about. It's really about the kids talking about what they think is important. I just have to commend the school, commend the police, commend everybody that participated, the teachers who helped be there and help supervise the students and gave them their space. And Christie was there to also, uh, she observed as well, so that we could tell you from our vantage point of how, how this went to be. I thought it was a great job, just a great job.
I'll just add that there is an article in the Norwich Bulletin that was written, initially when they explained it to us in the office, that they might be writing an article and it might be multiple schools considered in this article and kind of spoken about, so you're thinking we're gonna get a poll bler. Instead, they wrote an article that was, you know, a full article just on Plainfield High School because our response was so radically different. And it wasn't remembrance. And so I just, I urge you to go and read the Norwich Bulletin article because I have to admit, I read it and it is a true representation of how the day went, how that activity went. I also have to commend that all the children were back in class by 10. I was back home by 10:40, so I mean, when you think that started at 10 and you have kids that come into the auditorium, they stand for 17 minutes, they explain, they read the names, that's really impressive. And that there was no pressure as well, the children that didn't wanna participate had alternative options. I was just, I was impressed. I urge you to read the article in the Norwich Bulletin again. You can also look at what happened at some of the other schools as well because there's other articles that kind of judge that as well. But I was, I was impressed.
So I, I just want to tell the board that I think that your administrators acted respectfully towards the students and the students acted respectfully. I honestly, personally believe that we were missing a national voice that's coming as we saw back in the 60s and 70s, but we're seeing it come through in a respectful way. And I think we're gonna look back at this time and realize that this was a respectful way for our kids to represent themselves. Uh, we already talked about reading week in the, in the discovery bus, so just know that that was one of the things, but I'm glad we got to incorporate it. The last piece that I, I wanna do, and I'm gonna defer a little too picky and boring, is that the high school also took the responsibility of inviting with two, um, uh, school messenger notifications and, uh, marquee postings that said on the day of, uh, the day after the storm, when we had parent visitations, that they would invite parents to come in and talk about the safety procedures. Now, they don't betray what we do, where we lock, where do we stand, and that's, you never talk about that. You talk about the procedures that are in place. Um, a number of parents came, um, the police came and gave a presence, um, the security officers, the administrators, they spoke about what they did and did it on different categories. What is the frequency of, uh, safety procedures? What is a lockdown? What is shelter in place? What is an evacuation drill? What, when do they run them? How are the kids prepared? What are some of the constraints? How they work with the police? The police talked about how they, uh, interact and react. And security talks about the ongoing day-to-day. What we saw was great, I think the conversation was very good. And, uh, Peggy Anne came herself, and she can give you her eyes as a board member, what she saw, what she witnessed. That's the end of my.
And Mr. Worth and Officer Wolfberg came down and they, they talked about all the different procedures, how the police could respond, how, how the school would respond, some of the specifics of what they do do, they did like, again, not giving away anything in particular. Um, and the security guard also talked about what we do for, for the children and how he interacts with them during the day, during a lockdown. And they made, made it clear of what was a lockdown, what was, what was a fire drill? The different things that they do, they have the children do during any one of these situations. And they made it specific as to what these different things were. And I thought it very informative because sometimes that those situations are blurred on, you know, what, what we're gonna have the children do. So when the children came home, you could understand what they were talking about and what they were gonna, what they had experienced during the session. So I thought it was very, very informative.
Oh, thank you very much. Moving on to individual report, um. Well, I went to the State House with Superintendent DePietro last Thursday, uh, last week to speak with Senator Summers. And I have to say, it was an hour and a half conversation with the senator. And Representative Skolczek was also able to be part of that conversation as well. We were able to bring basically our budget that we broke down on the third in our workshop and present that kind of to them. In addition, we were able to sit down with them and tell them just how devastating any more cuts would be with the continuity plan and explain it to them. We were able to hear their voice of kind of what's going on up there as well. Which I have to say, I was very optimistic after hearing about what they are doing up there and where they feel that they're going to get to. And just what they had to say in regards to the governor's budget, which was, do not consider this. This is not even a viable option. And that there's just that strong, on both sides of, of parties, that there's this strong, that is not an option. So I was just very encouraged by the conversation. And obviously including in your supplemental stuff, it's just a breakdown of, you know, again, the information from the 28th meeting that we brought forward to them. In addition, because we are going into such a, a public time with the meetings and all of the media responses and social media and everything, I feel that it would be a good time, since we paid for our CADE membership, to have Nick Caruso from CADE come out and kind of run over just the responsibilities and the roles of board members and to kind of talk about and answer some of our questions that we may have for him. This is our time to ask questions and I recommend for certain situations. So Nick Caruso, who's presented to the board numerous other times during my time on the board in the past seven years, um, gave us the date of March 29th at 6:30 PM at the ECC. It, it typically runs about an hour, but it is very informative. Even if you've been on the board for a number of years, there's always questions that you can ask that you kind of get the answers for, and it's a good informative session. So I'll certainly send out an email to try to see if everyone's available on that day in the next couple of days. And if they are, I kind of wanna be able to get him to come in, kind of give those, those trainings